I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mazur?
Here.
Snyder?
Absent.
Sofa?
Here.
Weaver?
Here.
Wilson, absent, Zimmer?
Here.
Uh, another genited from the sidelines.
Do we have to excuse the absence for?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, yeah.
For, like, to excuse the absence for Derek Schneider and Larry Wilson.
Sport.
Mazur?
Yes.
Snyder, absent, sofa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Wilson, absent, Zimmer?
Yes.
Marder?
Yes. All right. Another genited from the sideline, um, other parades? Let me exhale, Richard.
Yes. Um, my concern was, we had the meeting, so the Wednesday before, last Wednesday, and I know it was addressed about the weeds and stuff in the, um, field, I guess, where the condos are supposed to be built. Um, so I was like, okay, maybe it'll be taken care of. Well, I waited till the following Monday, which would've been last Monday, and I came to the city office and I filed a complaint about the weeds and drainage, because we live on, where we live on Pratt, we have the, um, the houses next to us, but there's also still an empty field next to us where they're gonna build another house, and then we also have behind us where the, the house has been built on Bell River, but the property runs along our back, our back backyard. So, uh, first of all, the weeds are six feet tall, and also, behind us, when they had cleared that area to build the house on Bell River, they took out, um, a fence, just like plowed it down. I assume it was on the property, not on the farmhouse property, but on that property, and it's, and a giant pile of weeds, so, in our backyard, you can see this giant pile of crap, which is metal and wood, all in a big bundle, first of all, and then, the weeds are still there, but then there's also weeds on the property to the west of us, which the house hasn't been built on yet, but my bigger concern is the drainage there, because for the time that we have lived there, basically, until like two years ago, you've always been able to, the ditch has been maintained next to us, and then you could always see it flowing from the field, like coming this way. Well, that's not the case anymore, because of the properties that have been built and it's now plowed, so the water just sits there, um, and then it doesn't flow through the ditch properly either, because of the weeds, when it gets to our house. So, the last rain we had, there, it's obviously sitting in our backyard, and now it's almost coming up to the house. Um, the only thing that's stopping it is because our dog had run a rut in our yard that built up, like, a stopping point, I guess, from the water, because the ground happens to be higher there. So, um, I filed that complaint, uh, last Monday, and I did never have heard anything about it. I see that the guy is out there plowing, or cutting down the grass in where the condos would be, but we still have the two sections next to us, so I don't know if something's gonna be done about that, or, I mean, something needs to be done about it, but I don't know whose responsibility it is.
I'm sorry, can I just think, I mean, I did receive a text from the builder that his man was supposed to be there today to do all this cutting, so how, why he's got that, I don't know.
I mean, I see they started out condo area, but like next to us, there, obviously, that has.
All that was supposed to be taken care of, too.
Okay.
They're not gonna be able to rush off that pile of debris?
No.
They're gonna have to haul that out of there.
Right.
I think the developer really needs to get a one-on-one in person.
Where, for the softball fields, we're in, so, obviously, who else has done that?
Can you give me any notes on this?
Yeah.
You better, I am.
Yeah, okay.
And who?
Maybe you can reach out to, uh.
Yeah, I called the, I called the developer and told him, you know, that they need to get out there and take care of it. He talked to the builder, I talked to the developer, and they said, as soon as it dries up enough, that we can get a tracker out there and then we'll, you know, get started on it.
Well, yeah, because that's another.
But they'll have to get those lots, too, and I'll just give them a call and tell them that, also.
In your opinion, is it dry now?
Pardon me?
I mean, you're really close to it.
Yeah. It's kind of.
Yeah, he said they already started.
Yeah.
They did start today. They started about four o'clock today.
But there's also in that ditch that would run this way through the field, there's also garbage in there, too, like.
So that to clean the ditches, right.
Yeah, correct.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Fields? Want to do it here, or you want to go up there?
I, so I need to ask a question, just real quickly, by me over here. Um, you say that, I know what ditch you're talking about, and running that field for our sidewalk there, too, and whatever it rains good, I mean, you would physically see that we had flow going through my other neighbor's yard, we would have a small, so we know that flow. So are you saying that that, uh, that area that used to serve as that channel is no longer functioning right? Is that because of dirt or the weeds in there, or am I?
The one next to my house, or the one going through the field?
Well, well, both, I know the one that was right by your house.
Correct, the one by our house is just filled with weeds, but the one going through the field, you can't even see that, it's like nonexistent. I mean, I have pictures of, like, yeah, it's like flat now, like there, where there's crap, and like, there's like cattails growing, because there's water sitting in one area.
I know, it takes a lot before you get those, but it's gotta be true, well, I mean, Martin.
Yeah.
I was trying to get an idea of what the natural, I mean, I knew basically, it all slopes down the way I've watched it for years myself, and I, I just wanted to get a little better idea. I'll probably take a look at it, too, just to satisfy my own curiosity, but, thank you. Thank you for speaking up, I appreciate it.
I think Martin has changed the grade back there by scraping all the dirt.
Okay, um.
Okay, Mr. Fields?
Uh, Jim Fields, eight oh two six three Bell River. Uh, again, I, we've been to a few meetings, there's been some complaints filed, some home complaints submitted. I submitted one on the tenth. Um, I'd like to thank the members of the council that may have read my complaint, reached out to the builder and the developer, and actually got some movement to where there's some calls out. Thank you, Bart, for getting out the barricades on the sidewalk. Uh, thank you if you did reach out and you did do the consideration on some of the issues that were brought up to your attention with the weeds, and some of the trash, and just the clutter about, you know, so it's easy to hear. So, thank you for addressing that, to all of you. Um, in follow-up, um, I want to go back to the last meeting where you had with the attorney, and we opened up at six thirty, uh, you opened for public comments, uh, the developer's attorney, Mr. Eby, came in a half hour late, was allowed to speak, and I'm asking the council if the council had time to vet Mr. Eby's commentary, because Mr. Eby's commentary was half-truth at best and disinformation. Uh, there are statements on two HOAs condo associations being separate from the first development, which is not true. Uh, he stated there is no HOA necessary for the first phase, which is not true. Uh, he said that, uh, the proposed planning meets all zoning compliance, which is not true. Uh, he also said that this seems like a City of Memphis problem, which is not a statewide problem, which is not true. Um, he also mentioned the need for a management company to handle the condominium and apartments, which, again, doesn't go against the master deed, it's not in the bylaws. Uh, there's also a mention, eleven meetings back, that the developer knew that ten units on that would meet the zoning, so it wasn't known to them, uh, again, a little more disinformation from the attorney. Uh, so, in looking at an attorney's statements, the attorney works for the developer, the attorney doesn't work for the city. I'm here because I'm a citizen of Memphis, and my interests are the city of Memphis's best interest, and my neighbors' interest, so, I seem like a pain in your butt, but I'm a pain in your butt, because there are liabilities here, missteps that are taken. A developer is a businessman, they're here to do business, and whether it's going to fit into your things or not, whether you realize it or not, if you sign on to them, giving you false information, you act on it, that doesn't make it right. There's been a lot of things, co-compliance issues, you hear a lot of drainage, you hear a lot of erosion. Um, again, the sidewalk, pedestrian passage safeguards, weed growth duty occupation, that's all been addressed, but fifty-two oh six storm drainage, not, conceptual pan, one fifty one oh eight, not, one fifty one oh nine preliminary plan requirements, not, one fifty one fourteen storm drains, not addressed, one fifty one twenty-six additional regulations and remedies, no amendments recorded submitted, there have been no amendments recorded by the developer. So, the original master deed in twenty twenty-one is, what is enforced? That's a legal document. Um, I resent all that information back to the city. The condominium association bylaws, it's all there, you can look at all that information, it is at your fingertips, look at it. Um, again, it's just doing a little more homework, uh, the natural features and green belts, the drainage and erosion control, the adjustments on that back lot, I mean, those are still issues that were part of, you know, a few complaints, a handful of complaints that have been filed. So, again, I appreciate the council considering these things. I haven't heard any personal feedback, no official feedback, I would say, from a collective group. Um, I, I'm bringing it up to the city's attention, because the city kinda needs to pay a little more attention to what's going on. Like I said, I'm a stick in the mud, but it's the black and white to me, so, I mean, that's, that's the kind of fines that I'm gonna operate at, so, you know, whether, whether we're all together on the same side, I think you see some of the citizens here, and, you know, this is just trying to keep up with things, so. If there's ever any questions or any of this stuff, interpretation, I mean, I have a team of engineers, I have a team of surveyors, I have a team of developers, I have planning connections, you know, people that work with the cities and city planning or city managers, folks like McKenna, who handles a lot of municipalities, and come in and give you the oversight that you need as a contract basis, to actually look at things and say, no, this isn't really right. It may look right, but the road commissions don't beat the standards, and they can, they can point those things out to you, and then you can, it gives you a little anxious pushback, I don't like.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fields, I appreciate, uh, you sharing that information, I do appreciate yourself, and you have valid points, no doubt.
Did you have a copy of those errors that you claimed the lawyer made? Would you be able to email it to them?
I will, I will give you a.
Just your ex copy?
I, yeah, I'll give you a synopsis of what it is, I have it in writing, that my team and I have looked at. Uh, we compared that, compared to other statements made before the council, uh, by the developer and by the construction manager, um, to where they falsely represented things to the council, the planning commission, and the citizens when asked questions. So, again, we're seeing a track record of things in representation that, you know, is enough of a red flag to pay attention to, and I think you, you know, when you look historically at what you're dealing with, or what you're doing, you're getting a less than honest take, so, that's also something that needs to be taken into consideration.
Does the process, that it's gone so slow, you think that has anything to do with it? But nothing but condos, then, black and white, yeah?
From a construction standpoint, the, the drainage, uh, detention pod. If you wanna have conversation later on with this, you know, if you, Robbie, if you want to request it.
Okay, all right, I will.
I think everything that you sent us is forwarded to our attorney for review.
Our attorney, yes, it has, and I can, I can.
We have our own engineers and all that.
Then went to the attorney, and I thought you were gonna have a meeting with the attorney and the engineers, you told me.
Because I thought, I thought we were supposed to meet with the developers at the last meeting, and then you said, no. So we'll have our attorney, our engineer.
That is the request out there. I did send several specific points, some of them nearing Mr. Fields' points, I have yet to hear back.
Okay.
And I did.
I just don't want to think we're not even.
We have, we have.
Everybody else takes time to.
We're working, we're getting the planning set up with attorneys and.
I let Mr. Francis know, please call me if you have any questions on this stuff, because I know it's a lot there, and, and he knows I'm always available, so he will at least help, share what I know. I'm pretty transparent, most people know, you know, I want to, I wanna do things right, so.
No, I just.
It's on the works, it's been put on his desk, the ball's out of my court, anyway, and, uh, I'm certainly going to be scrutinizing this very, very carefully from here on out, and I, you know, I guess we don't want to get into a big side discussion, I'm kind of.
I'll let you stick to the order of the special.
However, there, there are a lot of things addressed here, and, and I'm going to expect.
Just, just so you know, Mr. Fields, it hasn't gone by the wayside. All right, I appreciate it. All right, thank you. Let's move on and get back to our agenda, okay? Um, next up, the big one, purchase agreement for funeral homes. So, what we're looking at doing is, the, uh, your funeral home is up for sale, and the city office is here, we are just so cramped, um, with space, with everything that we've got going on, um, you know, now that the elections are, you know, super long, you've got the early voting, and we have to have all this equipment here, and just basically, we've been short on space in the city office since I can remember. Um, I mean, we have storage that's in an attic space, which is just not right, but, so what we're doing is, because this building has come up for sale, um, what we're looking at doing at this point in time is looking into the purchase, that building, so we can move the city offices out on the main street. It'll give us more room, this would eventually become the, the fire department if the purchase goes through. Um, Larry Wilson has a lot of stuff set out here, um, we're looking at the purchase price of, uh, two hundred thousand dollars, and we're looking at, you know, renovations to the building to get in there, and the parking, and everything else to make it suitable for us to occupy, um, we're looking at somewhere, you know, a little bit north of a hundred thousand dollars in renovations to the building, but I think this is a very opportune time, and a very good price for a building like that, because I don't think we could make renovations to this building for three hundred thousand dollars and make it usable space. I think it would be, right now, it's an opportune time, I don't know, Mr. Wilson has a lot of questions, unfortunately, he's not here, but I think, you know, we have talked it through, and I think Larry's sitting on the fence on it, but I believe that, uh, at this point in time, that we should move forward and, uh, go ahead and sign on a purchase agreement. Jason, go ahead.
Mr. Rosso, if you wanna step up and, and move that chair up, in case anybody hears, I'm sure somebody has some questions for you, or maybe kind of present to them, watch about the gist of the offer.
I have a remark, if I may. I don't want to assault or put into it, but we get current buildings, because of age, I'm just being one. We got parking lots, and in these buildings, again, you got furnaces, those furnaces as well, all over twenty years old. You got a library over there with furnaces that I keep trucking along with, we got some large expenditures, parking lots are one. And we know how expensive asphalt is, we never did finish this gravel area here. I personally have a problem laying off that kind of money, when you got an existing building you apparently can't afford, and especially if you dip in a piggy bank for this amount of money. I, I, I'm for going to another avenue.
Don't look at the.
I, I, I have number one would be building on the building, uh, if you gotta add on to this one, and one north lines, however you gotta do it, I think you're gonna look down the road, and all my, uh, where we got the money, we spent it all on what we have to renovate at the time. So roughly three hundred thousand dollars, but I, I can make that just part of it. Hopefully, this furnace doesn't, you know, the library furnace doesn't, or the roof, this roof, I forget the name, but I put two roofs on this building, since I've been here for thirty-two years. I really hope you all really think about this expenditure.
I think the.
It does sound, it sounds like a good idea, but at the same time, we're gonna be sinking money in a building that we could not even hold, and we're not putting any money into our current buildings that really need. Again, one thing, we strip out forty-four by forty-four every year, within terms of the paving, and, uh, the asphalt right behind it, that needs repaving, and we never paved what we tore out and finished what we were supposed to do, and that was paving, again, you got parking lot crossed here, you got two parking lots, library, there's an awful lot of money, just in asphalt.
How, how much parking lot is three hundred thousand dollars, when you do?
Probably get them all done, but again, it's not just a parking lot, it's so high dollar, I, again, we're gonna put a parking lot into a big. So we got space for our citizens, park animal, and that, and it's probably gonna end up staying gravel, based on my thirty-two years of experience. And anything, we've got parking lots over here that have been paved since I've been here, that are aged, and right outside this door here, you can see that big house that's in the middle of it, that's what we've done for it. Again, you've spent a lot of general fund money here that you should be investing in and watching out what's gonna become another life. It's gonna turn into my list station, where I put all that money in, it was all nice and nice and nice, and now they're old. This stuff is already old, and I haven't addressed any of it. So the race of finding this building, without looking at other options. As a superintendent, and as a taxpayer, I'm a major problem. Maybe you're not aware of any of this, but I just caution a few things. We have to be able to afford to maintain the buildings that we currently have. And oh six, my wells are supposed to support themselves, and that's another option, because you can use some water money for the purchase of this, you know, that, but we're gonna be pretty well broken now, once we pay all three hundred seven thousand dollars.
I can't. I mean, I'm. Two hundred thousand dollars to purchase a building, and, you know, for helping make the renovations.
But.
Okay, so even really, this, um, was only brought to us because the girls in our office are running out of room and stuff like that, so, and it was, it's a one-time, it's kind of a one-time opportunity, because there's no other buildings, unless that goes for sale again, there's no other buildings, um, that, really, you're in town that are available.
I can build you one for thirty thousand dollars.
You can build a building for thirty.
We can own a piece of property right over here.
You can build city offices for thirty thousand dollars.
Build your city offices, you got city offices, she just needs storage.
So we're just building storage?
We need the space, we need to have access out in the hallway and everything from our last audit, and the two hundred thousand of this is basically what we saved this year in our budget, so it's not like we're taking two hundred thousand out of.
But that two hundred thousand could also be during.
I think it's.
One at a time.
I don't care, I mean, whatever you decide, you decide, and I'm just gonna go along with it.
And, and even, no matter what happens tonight, if we say we're okay with signing this, we have thirty days to actually decide, so that you have that due diligence period.
I see where it's going, Jason, so.
You have that due diligence period.
I hope the taxpayers will, I just remember what I just said right now, we got things falling apart already, let's add another building to it, book a hundred grand into it, when this could be sufficed by, I don't know, thirty by thirty building.
That wouldn't be under the same roof, so if they have to get any of the, 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 the voting equipment or anything, they would have to go over there and transport it back over here, transplant it back over here.
We normally get phone calls to do that, even when it's right here.
So put out our voting?
Oh, yeah, in fact, I gotta get two voting machines out. I used to have to go up with a catwalk to get files, I, I'm not calling on any of that, I'm just, I'm just cautioning you. Here, here's a floor that's been in here, I can speak up thirty-two years, I don't see anything major wrong I wouldn't place, but at the same time, we got, we got a church over there, how much money have we put into it? We got a basement that leaks over there, that was a big deal to one consumer, one vendor, nothing's ever been done to it. That's excavating the foundation, or cutting the floor. And I think that's rather a major issue, and I don't see it ever getting done, unless we start putting money towards it. I just wanna bring this stuff up.
Great, thanks, Bert.
Okay.
Anybody else wanna make any comments?
Yes, the intention was to sign a purchase agreement tonight, I'm not down on that, this is not now, but I got this fabric of information yesterday. Expect a piece, that's right, the council meeting, I just wanna get a talk, and I would like to go through a purchase agreement a little bit, I got a few questions. I'd like to discuss the budget a little bit, that Larry laid out, did some things for, so, I'm not prepared to take a vote, I, I will not support a purchase agreement until I have these.
Do you have any questions for?
I do, but I wanna see if any council members have any statements, too, I don't, I'm not wasting time, but I expect to get them in here before we, I, that's one of my main questions.
I'm not ready to make statements until I hear the terms.
Well, exactly, that's one of my questions, so I don't have to, you have the horse there, you know, I'm not, I'm not here to sign a purchase agreement tonight, I'm here to hear some input from our fellow citizens, see if I'm understanding, you know, I've got twenty-five pages here, yesterday, so, I'll turn over my fellow council people, they, they'll say, I'll go through just a few basic questions, I am, I'm trying to, I'm not wasting time, but that's what we're here for.
Robbie gave you thoughts?
Well, I thought, I thought it sounded like a really great plan, and I know that they say, they come ahead on the budget, give me extra revenue, maybe from our extra businesses, but, um, I would like to see improvements to the city, maybe deal with furnaces as they come, I don't know, I, I know, I know this, I'm on the library community, too, so I know what they're dealing with, and I talk to the girls here a lot, and I know what they're dealing with, too. I think it'd be a good improvement, it's a lot of money, the parking lots, you know, it'd be nice to make them nicer, too, but it's almost like they're no better than our roads, I mean, our roads are better than our roads, actually, but, I don't know, I just, I'm really conflicted right now, and, thank you, Bart.
Mr. Zerber, do you have any comments?
Um, I do not, I'm curious where the conversation will go, and I will make assessments based on that.
Mr. Rosso, if you'd like to address the work.
Sure, um, the property key available, um, I've talked to a few of you on board, a few went over to look at it, um.
Is that, are you a realtor?
Yeah, I'm Phil Rosso, um, I am a broker affiliated in Clayton, and, uh, been on real estate for about forty years.
Motion company circle, not your company?
Keller Williams.
Keller?
Keller.
Keller?
Williams, Clayton. Um, so I was trying to come show you the property, talk with everybody, um, we had, uh, we had open, uh, we got the opening, and Robert wanted to come in here, we had, you know, we were all there.
We didn't, no, we.
Yeah, I, I was.
We, we, only, only couple people.
So what we did is just bring in, we brought in Bart, and we brought in, I went there.
That's why we got that big email.
Yeah, so, I, I brought, I, I went there, I brought in, we brought in Bart and Mel, and Kurt happened to be out working, showed up as well. And that, was that, oh, and Larry Wilson, if you wanna look at some numbers there. So it was very preliminary, if we get under contract and go pending on it, we have inspection period that you all would have the time to go and view it.
Can, Kurt?
No, because you actually have thirty days to decide whether you actually wanna continue to go through. So it just, this just gets it under contract, and then you have thirty days where you can do your walkers, inspections, wherever you want, you can dig as deep as you want.
You're planning on giving them a, a retain, about, hang on?
It's, it's, it's called an earnest money deposit, and if we back out.
If we, if we sign first.
If we back out of it, we get a return.
We do?
Yeah, it comes back.
You've got to get it.
No, no.
Okay.
We, we put an earnest money deposit down, and if we, within our thirty days of inspection, decide we don't wanna go forward, we get that money back, we won't, we'll withhold, we won't be out anything, except for what we might pay for to bring in inspectors, I think we wanted anything further.
So, I got the call to show up there, be a little bit, show you guys the property, um, purchase per foot, and location is probably the best you're gonna find on Main Street for any buildings. Um, so we went over to look at the building, and they asked me to draft the purchase agreement, this is the commercial purchase agreement that I used, um, I went to, I drafted it, went up, I sent it to your, uh, Alan Francis to review, he made some modifications to it to make sure that there, nothing will tie you guys to it, if you decided you didn't want to. Um, the reason for the pushing it started on it was to tie the property up, you could be tied, tied to make a decision whether you want to go forward or not.
Ask me whatever questions you have, because there's a lot of stuff in there, if I go page, red page, you guys might figure it out more.
We, we have till Friday to decide?
We, we stay here by your lap till we decide.
To decide on this, this is great, you have a day on here.
Um, there is a date on there, because we have a date, but whatever date, it can change, this is preliminary.
So this has been filled out already, because I just got it blanked out.
No, it's not.
You dress it right there.
What I'm talking about, you said you had a date on there, correct?
Said this offer stood till 26th of.
Yeah, so, so originally, so originally, just letting you know.
Yeah, I see a date though.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's not fill in, did you fill in a date? That's what I'm trying to ask here, though.
No, no.
Right here.
What our offer expired. Place for, was there a date put on this? I mean, you're at.
You're asking when our offer expired?
It's a blank, no blank.
Three days.
This offer is open until July 26th.
Okay, till 26th, okay, thank you very much, that's all I was getting at, so we do have that date. So as far as the clock ticking, we're going to the 26th if we don't do anything today, is that correct?
This can be changed whenever you want, this was, this is preliminary, you have to buy your attorney.
Okay.
He, he made the change, he put that date in there. Originally, Alan wanted us to present it to the sellers, they have them sign it, bring it back to us. The seller said that they will not sign first, although they would probably agree to all the terms. Okay, so, um, Alan said, well, let's put a date in there so that we can get some kind of traction, that's just not laying out there open, and they realize if you're going forward or you're not going forward, because they, they're still, at this point, they still have showing down a regular basis. I don't know who, I'm not the listing agent. Um, it's listed with another company, and so I'm just dealing with their representative.
I heard they have one offer on it, but they were waiting on ours or whatever, that's.
They told, and they said out of courtesy, out of courtesy, they would wait till you guys had the opportunity to do a meeting to see if you were interested before they move forward with anybody else, because I, I think in the end of the day, they wanna make sure that they're respectful to you, so that even if you don't go forward, whoever buys it, still has to come in front of you.
Sure.
Right, and no need to.
So you don't actually, you're not the Realtor for?
I am, I'm, I'm.
Toys?
I am not the Realtor for toys.
I don't, I don't understand how that works.
So.
Why would you be here when I'm the Realtor?
Because he's on.
Because I'm working for your best interest.
He's on their side.
Okay.
I, I'm, yeah.
I'm old, I'm slow, but I'm determined, I got that for a long time.
I'm, I'm looking for your best interest.
So you would be the one preparing these documents for us?
Yes.
So I, I prepared some documents, sent them over to.
That was one of my questions, who is representing us and who is preparing the documents?
Me.
I only had, you know.
So Steve, the purchase agreement you're looking at, is already gone to our attorney. Okay, that's good to know, that's good information.
Including putting the job that day of the 26th, even though we knew we were gonna meet today, we didn't want, so.
No, I, I understand.
What his thought.
You have to bear with me, I'm slow and I ask a lot of questions.
I'm, I'm patient, I've known this a long time, it's no problem, that's makes sense.
You can teach me, you can, or you can confirm what I'm saying, that's all I'm here for.
This, this document was come up between him and Alan Francis on our behalf.
Okay.
To make an offer to.
Well, that's, that's, I was saying, you want information for me, you feel a little bit better.
And there's also things that we put in here that you may or may not wish to do, but we give you the opportunity to do if you, if you choose. So we've gotten a whole lot of other things in here for your protection that you may or may not use, like phase one environmentalists, you may decide opt out of that because you know it's probably been used for, as long as it's been used, so you're pretty sure there's that remaining storage tanks around there, so you might not go look for storage tanks, because it's been the center of commerce, if it was there, you guys would have known about, somebody would have seen it being dug up, or, so there's things we put in here just for extra layer of protection for you that you probably don't need, but when I was talking to Alan, I said, I would really have more protection than some slips of the games. So we went through here, we made, the offer basically is 199,000, uh. 99.89, which is what they're asking for the property. The earnest money deposit, if we do sign the purchase agreement, will be $2,000, which is refundable. If you, if, it's, we have a 30 day contingency, so you have 30 days to do any of your inspections, any of your votes, any of your public opinions, uh, public meetings like this. Uh, whatever you, whatever you decide to do in those 30 days is all on you guys to do it, so at the end of 30 days, you either feel comfortable to go forward or you, you, you get out of each money bag. Um, I think the reason we're trying to do it quickly is because once it's sold, you gotta wait for next guy to come back along and write another location, so. Opportunities that are only, are time given to do what you want. Um, so we took the chance to do that. Um, there are some thoughts about the property we have in there that the purchase price could be paid as cash if we close on it. The earnest money deposit, like you said, is, is, will be given back if you decide not to go forward. Due diligence means you have 30 days to do whatever you want on the property. Check it out, find out the corner stakes. Um, for example, we, we, we wanna make sure that the driveway, because the driveway in there is, okay, currently have five, you'd wanna widen it, we wanna make sure that there's proper space to the north of the property to widen the driveway, you know, so there's, there's things that have been here for your protection that way.
Larry's also done some preliminary numbers on those things. If you look at Larry's sheet, the parking lot, carpet removal, the new boiler, um, and, and that's just a few things, I know Kurt's gone through it as well and kind of estimated some things, but once, once you're under contract and pending, that's when you.
Just so you know, if you're looking there, you get the hard numbers, you know. There's a number here for the parking lot, that's 4,500 bucks, it's 45,000.
Yeah, it's more than that, he's got it wrong. It's just a typo though.
Yeah.
It's 45,000 or 4,500?
45,000 for the parking lot.
Parking.
That's what he has.
That would probably be one of the biggest expenditures.
Yeah, later on, he did go through it and, and add it in the front.
Yeah, it's probably she did say correct, but it is, the numbers worked out to 110,000 dollars.
That, and that was, that was widening the driveway so cars can get in and out at the same time. So one car doesn't have to wait for another.
And pull it up to ground in the back of the whole property, because that property is a big L shape. So that would be pulling off top soil, then backfill it with a limestone or whatever that would be suitable for, for parking in the meantime.
You should all just ballpark over the fall.
This is pretty much ballpark, yeah, but pretty much, I think he got, well, you came up with the numbers with the parking lot, right? Um, I called a couple carpet insulation people, they both kinda came with the same numbers. Um, I don't know who did the boiler, and then we just kinda put some other costs in there, just some, here's, you know.
I talked to Vern, so we're adding the boilers, if the, and suppose that's an installed figure, that I think he wrote 10, maybe 10.
Yeah, yeah. So they're all just asking at this point, but once we get under contract, so, so say we were to sign this, it goes over to the seller, and he says, I agree to your terms. He signs it, we have 30 days to decide what we wanna do. We can always ask for an extension on those 30 days if we need to bring in more people, it's up to the seller to agree to that or not agree to it. He could say, no, you got your 30 days, figure it out, if not, I'm zoning for the other guy. And that's it, we, we get our $2,000 back and we don't, we haven't lost anything but our time and research. Um, so that's pretty much signing today, you still have 30 days to dig through all those things that you might be unsure about, ask all those questions you wanna ask, um, and, and really go through it, because you, we have an out, we have a way out. Um, we basically have an escape clause with a due diligence contingency that says, hey, and we don't have to tell them why we're not happy with it. We don't have to say, hey, we don't wanna move forward because of, uh, the cost of the furnace, we, we don't have to tell them that, we just tell them that.
Is that furnace functional now, Bart, you know, that boiler work right now?
I believe so.
Just curious.
It looked like there had been some renovations done with that end of water.
It looks like there was a zone, some work done on one of the zones.
Right, I think they were rezoning it to heat upstairs.
There's not a lot of rest on it, so it looks like.
It's a four zone only firmly, it may have only been three. But at one end, it looks like one pass was added, meaning for the upstairs or.
Right.
That's all we can think of, but instead of the pipes being soldered, they were being.
Crimped.
Crimped, uh.
The property is owned for, right?
Was that?
Is that propress?
Yeah, yeah.
If property is owned for it, for.
Right, I think they probably added a zone upstairs.
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, we're zoned for that use, I would believe, for commercial.
C1 or 1. I think we've had that discussion many times.
We don't wanna mess up. We don't wanna do, put ourselves in that corner.
No, we won't, because we have it in the code exactly.
Right, yeah.
Just generally, could I, I wanna look, ask about a few of these numbers here, that are, that are, somebody correcting if I'm wrong, or enhance my knowledge on this, I mean, just to give us a ballpark, looking, you know, money here.
Yep.
Bart's concerned, I mean, you gotta look at the whole budget. General fund, basically Larry's saying we got $370,000 in the general fund. And that is under 70. So theoretically, I'm just talking theory now, that would, you can take 310 out of that and leave 60. Now, maybe the streets, we got 590 in there, with some expenses to come out of that, now, Bell River Road North Construction, I see we're, we're still on the book for 325 for that, is that correct? Am I looking at that right?
No, that'd be 265,000 for Bell River.
Oh, I need, that's the balance, that would leave.
Right.
That's not a firm number.
That's what they want, the city, it started at 250, and then something else came up, and then they had to bump it by 15,000.
So you're gonna reengineer some of that drainage problem on.
I believe so.
Okay, good.
So there was a little bit of an additional cost, which was a total of 265,000.
Right. So anyway, projecting, you, you saying that we'll, we'll have about 532 in that fund, but that is, uh.
For this year.
Yeah, projected 23, 24. Just to give you an idea, keep in mind too, not only the lowest and Pratt, we have those projects up from where all that work was done, they have to be done, so we have to keep that in consideration, we're going, also Pratt Road is here. Street, gotta be down on the map somewhere too, when we're done with all this stuff.
Right.
Right. Union.
Well, yeah, but so, we have, like he's saying the general funds 909, so we're sitting on almost a million dollars. Available cash, he's saying, I think, 390, might be reading that right now. But that is less than CD, we got over half a million tied up in CD, correct? And when is that really, yearly?
No, that's a sudden month.
Six months.
We got six months on that, so there's.
Don't you bring that to council, over yep, but don't you donate it?
Yeah, yeah, we just renewed it.
Yeah, I, I was just curious, when, I wasn't aware of that, when that was. Saying that is other money that is in our total budget that we can keep in mind, that is there. So Lawless Street, Robber Street's not included in that, so. You know, basically, in my understanding, what, what Larry put out here, basically.
Right, where, where, what Larry is looking is where we might have a shortfall with our, our major roads and streets.
For the year.
That maybe we could go into the general fund to use it, generally, we don't use the general fund.
We use the street fund.
We use, you know, the, the street.
That's not, that's not a restricted fund.
Streets are.
Then how can we use that money?
No, he's talking, Larry is, has the idea that maybe using our general fund to fix the roads.
A portion of it.
Going in, going into streets is okay, coming out of streets is not.
So, and again, to go back over this.
I, I, I got you, so, when we're looking at available cash, we're faced with these projects for the streets and other things that Bart might be concerned about, we do have that now, so by 39 in the CD and available cash, we don't touch that.
Right.
Of 390 or whatever it is.
Again, to go back into Larry's note here, I mean, you know, looking at the, the general fund right now, we're up 181,000 dollars from last year, already.
Yeah, we're, we're in the.
So, I mean.
So we maybe just as an add next year, one more or a little less?
You're saying when they do the audit, when they, they come in and do that audit, you think it would come out 180,000 deposit?
Or maybe a little more.
To that be on top.
Yes, for this.
Where it be on top of the general fund.
Which we just finished, so our fiscal year starts.
Yeah, it'll be on top of, but we already have it.
It'll be additional.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Oh, yeah.
Invested.
I share some money.
Invested in the city and.
Dave, I know you'd be interested in this. We're looking at, again, hopefully it's all street money. Lawless and Robber Street, we're targeting, but that'll forbid, hopefully we'll be coming to council for that. And also, this section of Union out here, that's falling apart.
I think I bet the city, I see her.
Yeah, but, but what we're holding, we're waiting for this new engineering firm to give us figures. And we've been waiting too long. Anyways, that's the game plan, we're hoping to get off our bid early enough to get, real competitive bids, and not wait till May to put off our bid.
Yeah, really, you know, both of myself, spend a lot of money, it's not, but we are operating in black. And if we wanna remain in, wait, we gotta careful, that's all I'm trying to do, is to understand the budget better, since they got out of this council, and, uh, so. I, I am, I think I got, I think I got an idea here of what Larry's getting across, you know, it's old school, I appreciate it. Somebody looking at the numbers here.
Yeah.
And when I talk to Larry.
I'm all out, just looking at it, you're, what's your view?
When I talk to Larry, he, he was like, you know, I understand, he's like, you know, streets are here, always. Opportunities aren't here always, you know, opportunity to buy a building isn't gonna be here next year, might not be here next week. But he's, that's what his thought towards him, in favor or not, so that, he, he was hoping to be here for discussion.
No, it's all right, I just, I was, so, I think, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll talk about that on that issue.
Yeah, we're not bound entirely to this, but I agree to, to sign it tonight, we got due diligence.
What's the process for if we, so say we, and this is all hypothetical, say we agree to this purchase agreement, we vote, say yes, let's sign it, we have 30 days. What's the process, and after we do the due diligence and we go through, I'm saying from a council perspective, for us to back out?
Oh, we have, we have another meeting, a special meeting to say, hey, we have a meeting to back out of it.
Once we get legit estimates, because I'm guessing, I mean, this is just me thinking, we would want actual estimates instead of phone calls.
Yeah, for sure.
Instead of that.
Those were just.
Made me feel better, because there's like 40 grand of, uh, in, in Larry's budget, there's 37,000 dollars of other costs which could be higher or lower.
That's why we ask for, that's why we ask for 30 days, most of the time, it's like 10 or 15.
And contingency costs, I don't even know what contingency cost would be, so.
Things that we may have missed.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I'm saying, like. Taking, taking percentages on top of.
Legit estimates, so, okay.
And if you vote to sign this today or whatever we do, we still have to get the seller to agree to it. The seller has not seen a person agree with that. It's one of these years with.
What's your gut say?
Well, we, I think we gave a very significant bid that should be good for them. And they would rather, because what they wanna do is, they only bought it to, to make their housing for their people, and since they can't do that, they don't need it.
Right.
But that doesn't mean somebody else doesn't want it.
Do you know what they purchased it for?
They purchased it for 205.
They purchased it for 205?
Yeah.
Do you know where they stand with the renovations we approved for them to continue?
They didn't do anything, they did some. They had some studs upstairs and that's about it. I think they, you know, they roughed in some bathroom space, and there's some studs upstairs, and besides that, it's, it's, it's totally raw.
No, it didn't, it didn't.
Downstairs is the same as it ever was, just a little dirtier.
Yeah, and it was raw, and, and there's some stuff they have to get out there too as well. But what I'm saying is, once, it's 30 days once they sign, so if you guys, whenever you guys agree to it, if it's today or whenever, whenever, then it goes to them, if they agree to it, which I expect they would, it's cash, it's for a price they're asking, they have, they realize that 205, they paid more than they're getting. They're getting, and they're okay with it, they just wanna.
Get out of it.
Be done.
It's, it's a tough sell of the property, you have a few type of businesses that could go there, but it's not, you know, it's not a normal storefront or a normal, you know, business, it's not industrial, so you can't do factory manufacturing there. So really, it's just residential or commercial, it's a tough spot for those two.
Would everybody budgeted to convert this into more of a fire department? Do you know, have we thought about that?
Right.
To convert these spaces into, like.
We have ideas, Bart, yeah.
Do you have any idea what that cost would be? Because it's not just the contingency cost there, it's contingency cost here too, that we would have to consider.
Maybe minimal.
Yeah, they're just moving office space up here, which is only.
Yeah, I, like, I'm just asking, I'm just trying to get the whole picture.
I know they gotta wish this, something'd be nice is to put a little gym in here for the firefighters. It's a good draw, um, that, it's good for recruiting, maybe pulling in, you know, some firefighters, I know a lot of halls have them.
And, and that equipment, places like Planet Fitness don't need equipment to factor. And then if you have it turned over to you, and Mr. Bart, it's one of those where you. And then if you have it turned over to you, and this is Bart, one of those where you have a local business, donate a new furnace, a new AC unit to the fire department. And if it's turned over to the fire department, and that could help.
That could help over here too.
Turn it over to the fire department.
Maybe the other one.
Any more thoughts?
Yeah, probably, it's Mr. Grusel, right?
Yes, Rob.
If you just quickly walk through a couple of these things, maybe.
Sure, yeah, I'm a hundred percent.
Number twenty-four is the fault, page twelve. I'm just wondering what that, you got section B down the purchases, you call. That last sentence there, I'm just trying to clarify it, you know, full bumping for, for Jard.
So, so basically, you're just telling what the, if the sale has complete, we've not completed, according to the agreement, so our agreement has, we have sixty day, or thirty days to do our due diligence. If you decided not to back out during those thirty days, and then you decide not to close, that would be a default.
Well, specifically what I'm looking at is that last sentence, the, the right to retain, so it solves the spoilage, the damage, that, that sentence there, I'm just trying to understand exactly what it is. Sounds like we have some residual exposure if.
No, that, that's just exact document.
Okay, good.
So what it is, is basically what says if you default, the only way you can default is if you go through your inspection period and you said, we're satisfied. And then thirty-five days from now, or thirty-five days if they sign it, you say, you know what, we change our mind, we're not gonna close. So what it says is they have to be, and this is, I, I would put it in here and then while your attorney agreed to it, says, sellers entitled to receive a deposit is intended not as a penalty, has full and complete liquid damages. So the worst thing that can happen is you lose the two thousand five if you really screwed it up. And you would have to really screw it up. Because, because you have those thirty days, you know when your deadline is. Either yes or no on day twenty-nine, or you could, you have a possibly two thousand dollars, but only two thousand dollars. In a typical commercial purchase agreement, if you default and you don't have that statement in there, what happens is they can sue you for whatever damage they want, but they said, well, now we have to resell it or sell it for less money because we lost the buyers during that, this time.
You're establishing a minimum cap, basically.
We're capping it at two thousand, and the only way you could possibly lose it is if you really tried.
Okay.
And then it says the right to retain as much as, as full of the damage that seller sold in exclusive remedy is, is the seller's sole and exclusive remedy in the event of default or fair to perform by, by use of purchase. In addition of any, to any liability percher with respect to its repair and indemnification obligation set down. In other words, when you go through your inspection, you break something, you are responsible for it.
Okay. Further down that page twenty-seven, Dad, I think you answered, you will be preparing these documents. Your firm, Cal Williams, will prepare this.
We will prepare one through your attorney to make sure it's legally registered.
Number thirty-four, I assume on the next page is no agreement or memorandum here of, that's just because this is not an signed document, we're not recording this in a courthouse or anything.
Correct.
I see confidentiality that you have that line down, obviously we're having a discussion, so.
Yeah, well, strictly, strictly because you're a community that can't really be confidential. You have to.
See, now I was looking through this offer, it took me a lot of time, I appreciate you pointing it out, Rob, you know, thirty-seven, you know, the agreement. Leaves blanks there, and I'm thinking we didn't, you know, you were talking about dates, that's what kind of threw me off a little bit there.
Yeah, so when we put the offer in, we'll give them a date that we signed it and also they have to accept it by. The reason we put it.
Yeah, that's why I thought, I assumed the document was not filled out.
Oh, yeah, no profit.
Well, because we didn't know. And then all these pages were next to following this. Okay, that, I, I appreciate that, that answers my questions concerning this proposed purchase agreement.
I have just one more thing.
For me?
Counsel, say this one. We own a library slash church. And we also own the youth center. What if we held our council meeting in one of those buildings? And here's your storage room. Didn't cost us anything, did it?
At what, at what?
Have council meetings either at the youth center or at, at, what do they call it? No, they're, I'm gonna call it the libraries, but the church, or the library. Hold our council meetings at one of those two buildings. Close room out. This is connection right to you. It's your storage room.
I've been asking for rooms in the youth center, I've been asking for everything for like the last seven years, and nothing has been done.
No, I'm not.
We climbed a straight fire ladder to go get our storage upstairs carrying heavy boxes.
But if your storage was in here, in this room, you wouldn't be carrying it anywhere other than in this room. And we hold our council meetings at one of our other two facilities.
It's something to think about, but one of the other problems we have is elections.
Yeah.
They're getting bigger and bigger and there's no room, and you can ask the people who work for us.
Again, we got, we got the youth center.
Bart, I've been saying that, nobody listens to me.
Well, I'm trying to say it again. I'm trying to say it again.
I asked, why are we renting a youth center for a dollar when we could be using it for City Hall?
There you go.
Nobody answers me.
And I just threw that out.
You gotta get a year lease out of that though.
What's that?
There's a fifty-year lease out of that youth center.
I don't care.
So it's up to the youth center.
And if they have meetings and they have to come for us, that's the only thing.
Just because you think there's a conflict, we have it through the week, they don't run it all on the weekends. I think as a city, we got something to say about our real. And again, if you didn't listen, we have a church over there with a pretty large.
I, I know, I just think for her, like when we're having meetings here and she has to go get something.
Do not listen to me, our meetings aren't here.
No.
We start holding meetings.
We have to transfer.
Because the meetings are here, if she needs something, she can run over there and make it up if she wants to.
This even makes less sense to me now, because I'm looking at a lot of square footage here. And you want to spend three hundred thousand dollars of tax dollars on something, we got a way to go around this. All we got to do is have our council meeting in another building, have our holding here up until there is no more room, or have that, where our council meetings usually are. It's very feasible, basically.
I don't know why I haven't done.
Well, there is no reason.
When's the fifty-year lease up?
This is, yeah, I was mentioning this.
She's heard, I talked about it before.
When is that fifty-year lease up on the line?
It's in the last five years, it was just brand new.
Last time was a hundred-year lease or some crazy.
You don't think you would work with us? We, that building was built for the youth. Primarily, that was a youth center. Not a Lions Hall. Well, now we got a sign that says Lions Hall Youth Center. The city hasn't seen that, but at the same time, we own another piece of real estate that has an elevator that we spent twenty-five thousand dollars put in. That you can just as easily have meetings in that building, it's gotta be more square footage than what you have in here. So, we see, we're just trying to save money because of the future. And I think it's very feasible. Three hundred thousand dollars, I'm sorry.
So how do we want to vote moving forward on what we have here? Do you want to table it, look it over, and sign it in the next couple of days? Or do we want to vote on it?
I think you got your meal, Rob, and, but I don't know what to say about it.
Or do we, you know, do we table, do we table it for a little bit of time so you can look at more things?
Did you ask me my?
I'm just, I'm just wondering, or, or make a motion to sign it and then vote up or down on it?
Well, whatever we do, and I would like to have a second to interject my discussion before we, and if we put it to a vote. My personal feeling, where we're at right now, I don't want to look at that bill. I want a tour, I want a high baller. I'm a retired HDAC guy, that's why I'm interested in the boiler. See what's done there. You said we could ask for extension if you want, our next order we kept, scheduled council meeting is six. I think that's the first two, what is it? Thirteenth, okay.
The election.
Another week, thirteenth. So, you know, what is the rush? I realize it's on the market. But we've gotten into so much trouble over the last number of years by thinking it's gotta be done right, right now. I want a chance to do due diligence. You want to follow a special meeting, fine, but I am not going to vote in favor, I'm saying subsequent to this, if we don't vote on the purchase agreement.
We have a due diligence period.
So, I know, why do I want to vote? I want, do I have to get rolled into a due diligence period now, it's thirty days, everybody should do it.
You don't have to be rolled into anything. You just vote how you want. Or, you just vote however you want, you're not getting roped in anything.
I understand that. Steve, I would be in opposition.
I think what you're asking for, we could not get if we do not have the due diligence period. They're not gonna let us just walk through there and do what we want to do without.
No, I would like, well, four other people appearing to be able to walk through it and watch it, and I, watching that, and I'm in for my position.
Because we didn't want to have a closed, it would have to be an open meeting if you get an average city council member together.
I'm not asking that, I'm asking for me. I'm asking for me.
Alright, we need another showing?
Yeah.
You want to do another showing, you want to schedule another showing?
Yeah, I'd be glad to, I mean, I have a problem. Thank you, I would hope, but that's not a burden on everybody. Just, just let you know, and again, I don't, this is the first time I've ever been to one of your meetings, but I have been to a lot of other community meetings.
Sure.
And I, I do realize, yeah, if we, if we would have invited all of you, I think it's a violation of the open. So, so not inviting you wasn't a slander on anybody, it was, one of my thoughts is, I don't want you breaking your boss. And so I, we placed the mayor's office and Bart was there.
So a courtroom, just what, five people in there?
Four.
Four, our courtroom's four. I want that one, it's going, why else want?
You, you three would keep us on to the floor, right there.
What about Eric and Larry?
Uh, Larry's already seen it.
Where's Eric?
And Eric.
Eric was there, was he?
No, Eric wasn't there. But Eric said, whatever, you know, he.
He's been through there before.
Yeah, he's been through there before. Cause he's the one that, you know, went through and kind of shut down.
And Steve, if you're allowing my tour, I like to be right there.
Yeah, I don't, I, I've been in it, I don't need to go in it.
Right, and again, I'm.
My issue is just that we weren't included.
Well, we were trying to avoid, we were trying to avoid having everyone there, we're just.
I think you should go.
Being more careful.
Look at your own opinion as it, as a city building.
You just set up another showing for the other, anybody who wants to go, I guess.
Yeah, I don't want people to get the idea that I am absolutely rock solid opposed to this, I'm not.
I'm not.
But I'm tired of rushing into things and then coming back and involving attorneys, that I am tired of.
Our auditor told us that a long time ago, we crushed.
We're probably gonna have to enroll an attorney no matter what we do.
No, but I'm taking half of the fact.
I'm just saying.
If we all do it, then all of a sudden stuff blows up, I mean, a little bit of.
So this is, this is already under.
Prevention. And for me, if I'm doing my due diligence as an elected member of this community, that seems to be the least thing I could ask, because I should at least go look at it.
Right. So, when I talked to Alan after the last meeting when he was here, kind of ran through this, what the idea was. And he's, he's the one that kind of said, you know, keep it limited on who walks through first.
I, I get all that.
You know, so that, that's why it went like that, and he literally, they just got this final thing drafted, I believe, yesterday, because Alan's been two, two days ago, because Alan's been in court.
I understand.
So we finally got this final draft for us to even review today, you know. I got it today or yesterday.
I understand it completely, but I also understand these same things keep happening with, when we're making major decisions. And they come back to bite us, and I want to try to prevent that, so if I'm being a little cautious, forgive me.
Do it another way.
Listen, I have no problem with it, I, like I said, we don't want to violate meaning, and I do know that.
We're, we're not going to, we're, we're all here now. I'm asking for one.
Yeah, yeah.
Three running comes, we, okay, I get that.
Whoever would like to come out, I have no problem with that.
Mr. Grusel, I'll work with you, I'll exchange my number with you, we'll try to, I'm basically retired, so I'm pretty flexible, I live right down the street, so. I'm trying to tie it along.
Just run out.
Or, I'll, I'll give you, I'll give you a show.
I'm free. And this time, for the, um, AC.
Yeah.
Can't have that on the roof.
No. Your condenser's all bad, but now you need either a furnace or.
Spire. I hear something.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is.
Wherever the coil's at and all that. I believe it's upstairs, because all the ductwork from the, comes through the ceiling.
I'll find it.
So work with them, so, uh, motion to table?
I'll support it.
Until when?
Till I look at it. I mean, we have the ability to call a special meeting, I mean, and we're all so far up to, you know, hammer out and get.
Hey, I want everybody to be satisfied.
We got Wednesday tomorrow.
Just want to make sure that we, you know, we can get them under contract.
I'll try to get together with it before the week is out, I mean, either on Thursday or Friday, I'm kind of tied up tomorrow.
That's fine. Yeah, we'll get it set up.
Okay, alright, so, yeah, we're, we're talking, get it done before the weekend.
Yeah, that's why I asked before I made any motions, what do you want to do, so? Instead of making a motion to sign it, I'd rather make a motion to table, support it.
Schneider absent, cell phone?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Wilson absent, Zimmer?
Yes.
Murder. Mazer?
Yes.
Thank you, Phil.
No problem. Thank you, Mark. Appreciate you being patient with me.
Next up, fire department. Part-time position. The fire committee made a recommendation.
If you find a hole in your schedule, keep it, find a hole in your schedule.
We'll go ahead and hear my carry drop.
Okay, whatever, just text me if you want.
Yep. Steve, will you let me know when you're done? Will you let me know when you're done?
Yes.
Okay. Again, back to the fire department, part-time position, the fire committee has recommended the city council to authorize Chief Pratt to hire additional help to cover our requested, uh, for the above rate at seventeen dollars an hour. Doug, do you want to talk about this for a second?
Yeah, I'm not asking for three hundred thousand dollars.
That's good news.
Yeah, that's good news. You know, I, I've been asking for a while now to hire some part-time positions for daytime, just because we're so limited right now on firefighters in the area.
And they got grass for me.
Um, so, we're looking at forty hours a week, probably seven thirty, three thirty. We'd have to hire at least two people to cover those forty hours to keep it as a part-time position. Uh, we looked at what neighboring departments are paying their daytime help, ranges anywhere from sixteen to twenty dollars an hour. So we're gonna go with seventeen for now. And that's about it.
The hardest part. You've got the money in your budget to cover it.
Yeah, we have the money.
And then whoever.
And actually, what, three years ago, we were approved to do twenty-nine hours a week.
So, yeah, so this would be basically, you know, you're gonna have somebody, so that we have somebody here, so we keep our certifications, make sure that we got the hours covered, that there's somebody here for a call, and if they're here, they can, you know.
I can go on vacation and not worry about it being covered.
There you go. So, I mean, it's, it's one of those, so. Any comments, folks?
I think the fire department understands quite some time, and it's a good move, good direction. Doug does a really good job with the budget, he's very meticulous, shared all that at our last fire committee meeting. There's more than enough in the budget to cover this to go into this year and, like, Chief's thought that, you know, I thought maybe seventeen was actually a little low. However, you say that there are a lot of people that maybe would be interested in the position, they're either retired or wanting to get more experience, so I my act yesterday, I don't think it's, you know, life's.
And, you know, when we get people in to interview, they may object to seventeen an hour, we'll, we'll see what they say, but that's, that's what we're gonna offer.
But I would like to see, we're, I think we're short five people now, is that correct?
At least, yeah.
That's, that's just for turnout, people, just regular guys coming in, so. We need that staff, and there's just no two ways, a lot of the city, you know, for the next twenty years, the city's gonna go through a lot of changes, there's just no doubt about it. There's gonna be a lot of growth, square miles, all these decisions, we really gotta be keeping that in mind, the stuff that we're doing, and part of it is getting our infrastructure up to par. I mean, fifty years, a lot of things been, you know, kind of gone by the wayside, they didn't, not that they, everything needed attention, but we gotta start thinking about that. And I really want to say, I mean, our fighter safety is, it's right up on the top. We all want the ambulance to show up, we all want the fire put out. And, you know, these are the guys that do it, and we can't burn one guy out. And basically, that's what we've been doing with Chief. Cause without him here in the city, we're not able to respond to a medical run, so. I'm thoroughly, thoroughly for them.
Free chance.
And we're giving it up to Chief to see one guy, two guys, whatever, see, see what kind of candidates he gets. So I, I'd move that we accept this.
So make a motion to approve the hire of up to forty hours at seventeen dollars an hour for the fire department.
Support it.
Support it.
Sofm.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Wilson accent, Zimmer.
Yes.
Murder.
Yes.
Mazer.
Yes.
Schneider accent.
Thank you. Now we just got to find the people.
It's not like it used to be where all our volunteers were right here in town.
It used to be that a lot of people.
Are you eliminating yourself from that position?
Yes.
Okay.
Most definitely.
Okay, just checking.
Uh, next up, Amendment to the sign ordinance number two twenty-five.
You don't need to stick around if you know, you've got other things to do.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
This is over.
I got to beat you up. No, no, I, I don't think I'll beat up. I just, I just, in case you have any, any pressure. I did text both of you. Just touch you back, I'll just, by the best time, and I'll make sure I, I get it. Just think of it.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yep, have a good day.
You too.
Okay. Um, back to Amendment to the sign ordinance number forty-five. Uh, basically, what we're doing is putting an amendment in our sign ordinance to add one line into it that basically says, those owned by local businesses whose design and construction specifications have been reviewed by the planning commission and approved by city council.
So I watched a meeting on this. Are we basically saying that anyone who has, so like, for the doghouse?
Right.
I, I watched this. Um, they want it to be reviewed and approved by the planning commission and then sent to the city for approval as well.
Correct.
Right, like that would be the process?
Yes.
And whatever the planning commission decides for that approval process is what they decide.
Well, they would just render an opinion and give it to council for acceptance, rejection, or modification, basically.
Sure.
And basically, we're adding in there is the local businesses.
Right.
Because we're already given state, federal. Your city has license to build whatever those parameters are. I'm not exactly sure. So we're grouping any business that will come into the, that will request that for now. And the, the planning commission chair has committed to, this is a live issue. We're going to flesh out this ordinance a lot. Yeah, aren't they all? Uh, we're going to flesh out this ordinance more so we get a little more specificity. Um, so I expect to continue that work, but in the meantime, it's just helps a local business. Um, you know, we got to be supportive of our local businesses. And I think the sign was safe and good, so.
The motion, are we ready for this?
Yep, I think so.
I'll make a motion to the city of Memphis sign ordinance number two twenty-five. Uh, changes to ordinance to add the language, those owned by local businesses whose design and construction and specifications have been reviewed by the planning commission and approved by the city council.
Support.
Weaver.
Yes.
Wilson accent, Zimmer.
Yes.
Murder.
Yes.
Mazer.
Yes.
Schneider accent, Sofm.
Yes.
Next up, Donna, do you want to talk?
Well, everyone knows how crazy it's been around here lately, especially with the voting and, uh, the meetings and requests we've been having. And I am losing like lots of my comp time, and I just want to know if I can recover, recover at least.
How much have you lost?
I will end up losing probably about twenty-some hours, but that's kind of including the nine days of early voting that we've got to stay. I haven't really added yet. I just know I'm right up to the top now with this meeting.
So you'll, so if you don't use the twenty-some hours, you can lose all of it.
Yeah, you can only have up to eighty hours if I don't, um, anything after that. Which I'd let it go if it's just a few hours or, you know, I mean, I don't care.
It just shouldn't happen.
But this is almost like, right, almost will be at the end of August, probably two weeks.
Right.
Past practice, I mean, we've done it with the police firm, we've done with Bart, where, you know, they're just, they're, they're not taking their time. And so we'll pay them for the comp time.
And you're, you're only asking for a week, though, if you're.
That's what I was going to say. Because I'm good with that. I'm good with a week.
Oh, I don't.
I can always go in here sometimes, and I don't mind. And I, and I don't even know how much is going to go over yet, so that's why I'm good with a week.
But I'm sure at least you have to take, if you go over forty hours, you'd like to have, be able to.
I just, no, just the forty hours is fine. It, it is just fine, honestly.
No, I, I'm just trying to understand. You, you say you accumulate up to eighty hours.
Yes.
You're approaching that eighty-hour mark now.
Yeah, right about there, yeah.
And then anything's.
And I know we.
Anything, or if you, you lose it, if you don't use it.
Yes.
Then you won't have the ability to use it, right?
And I can't because there's just too much going on and like, I went to take some last week, but I never had surgery, and it's like, I just.
Why do you want you to lose out on the company?
At least exercise up to forty hours depending on how it works out before you say.
Yes.
Are you satisfied with a forty-hour cam on?
Yes, I would.
Okay. I, I'll make a motion to allow our clerk to have at least forty hours of compensation. Be able to recover that if it goes over eighty hours.
Wilson accent, Zimmer.
Yes.
Murder.
Yes.
Mazer.
Yes.
Schneider accent, Sofm.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. If anybody else has anything to say, I don't.
I have nothing. Take a motion in there.
Motion.
I said, does anybody else have anything?
There's no line.
I directed it. There was a line around the table. My piece of paper, right when you said that.
No.
I was just curious, real quick, uh, what, saw the diagram?
What is?
That is the parking lot. That's just the parking lot.
If you want to talk about this stuff.
That's just parking.
Yeah. He said it.
I think it's the driveway in the parking lot.
Right.
It's widening the driveway.
I, I have.
So the way you're looking at it, the, the, what's on your left is the back of the building.
Yeah, it's all dashed, and I just wanted to know.
Probably extends behind the building, so.
Okay, got it.
I'm good.
I'm good.
All right.
Push to adjourn. Support. E two.